And here comes Mark.
Did the door open?
Well, good evening, everybody. I am going to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 5:30 PM. Prior to closed session, we do have four public comments. Entonces tenemos cuatro comentarios antes de nuestra junta. Y tenemos traductora, sí? Okay, perfecto. La primera es Agustina García.
Buenas tardes, soy mamá de Eric Aitán. Mi nombre es Agustina García Pacheco. Gracias a Dios que nos da oportunidad que estamos aquí. Ah, mi hijo cayó un error. Ya no vuelve a ser, está bien arrepentido de lo que hizo. Espero que lo regrese en la escuela porque él está bien arrepentido de lo que hizo. Y Dios nos perdon a todos, gracias.
Good evening. My name is Agustina Pacheco. My son's name, I'm the mother of Eric Aitán. I wanted to come to you to let you know that my son did commit an error. But we would like for him to return to school. He is really sorry for what he did and God forgives our sins. And so he's been repented and he would like, they would like for him to return to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Luis Gaitán.
Y buenas tardes, mi nombre es Luis Gaitán, padre de Eric. Nomás quería decirle que nos dieran chance de que regresara. Él está arrepentido de lo que hizo, pues él dijo que ya no va a volver a hacerlo. Quería ver si nos dieran chance de que regresara a la escuela. Eso es todo, gracias.
Hello, my name is Luis Gaitán, father of Eric. I would like another opportunity for my son to return to school. And that's it.
All right, next up is Eric.
I hope you're doing well. I just want to apologize for what happened with the recording of John Cena. I know my actions were wrong and I understand I broke the school rules. I regret it and I have taken some time to think about it. I get in a high importance to respect others' privacies and follow school policies. I just want, I would want to make, I want to make things right and learn from this. I went to a tree at Sari Mary Catholic Church and I learned a lot of things about not bullying people and behaving good and becoming closer to God. If I'm possible, I would love the set, the chance to come back to the school and show that I'm committed to doing better both in behavior and academics. I promise to follow all the rules and contribute to positive behavior. Thank you for considering this. I'm eager to move forward and continue my education at Del Dios Academy.
Thank you, Eric. Next speaker is Chantel Rombus.
I just want to say I had got the notice that possibly my daughter may be like expelled from school districts out here and in San Diego. So I just want to clarify in regards to that, if that is what's going to happen, I'll accept the Escondido School District, whatever, like she don't have to come to school out here, but not out in San Diego because we plan on moving from over here. It's been a lot of stuff going on with her at the schools, a lot of people bullying her and it took for her to take action for this meeting to be called, even though I tried to get this meeting called previous regarding her being bullied as well. So, and to, to take into consideration that we are moving, I do not want her to be expelled from all school districts because that's the message that I had got from one of you guys' superiors. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you very much for, for being here this evening. Of the Escondido Union High School District Board of Education. It shows that it's on. Did I really, I want to apologize to everyone here. I would like to reconvene this regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Escondido Union School District. Wow. And thank everybody for coming out on this rainy night. Would like to call up at this time Alicia Gonzalez from Del Dios Academy of Arts and Sciences to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand, and under God and the visible by liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All members are present and we do have a report out of closed session.
Thank you, President. On item B two, in the matter of existing litigation case number thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty-four dash zero 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 two two five six three dash CU dash PO dash NC, the board voted to approve the settlement agreement by a vote of five to zero. On item B three, in the matter of existing litigation, OAH case number two zero two four zero eight zero four two nine, the board voted to approve the special education settlement agreement by a vote of five to zero. On item B six, in closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee and took action to approve those charges and release employee number six 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 five eight nine by a vote of five to zero. In closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee and took action to approve those charges and release employee number six 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 four six by a vote of five to zero. And finally, in closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee and took action to approve those charges and release employee number six six seven nine one four by a vote of five to zero. That is all.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item C five, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes to be made to the agenda?
Move approval of the agenda.
Ms. Gardner moves. Mr. Houston seconds. All in favor, please vote. Michelle, can you please vote aye for Ms. Harper? Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to item C six, approval of the minutes of the January sixteenth meeting. Anybody have any corrections or changes? Looking for a motion.
I'll move.
Ms. Harper moves. Mr. Olson seconds, please vote. Motion passes four with one abstention. Thank you very much. Moving on to approval of the meetings of February fourth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Mr. Houston moves. Ms. Harper seconds. All in favor, please vote. Motion passes three in favor, two abstentions. All right, and moving on to item C eight, approval of the minutes of the February twentieth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I move approval. Second.
Ms. Harper moves. Ms. Gardner seconds, please vote. And that motion passes by a vote of four, yea, zero, nay, one abstention. All right, moving on to item D one, recognitions. Dr. Filia.
Yes, well, we are so happy once again to be able to celebrate our students from across the district with our Student Excellence Awards. We'll begin with Bernardo Elementary School and we have a highlight video to share.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Lachey, proud principal of Bernardo Elementary School, home of the Mountaineers. We're excited to share this video with you and highlight some of the amazing things that happen here at Bernardo Elementary every single day. Thank you so much for joining us.
At Bernardo Elementary, our staff and families have created an environment where each student feels valued, respected, and excited to learn. We want our students to be problem solvers who find solutions to real world challenges. That's why every class at Bernardo participates in project-based learning.
Everyone should have one or two of the items that you're going to be selling.
These second graders are becoming business savvy. Working in groups, they create items to sell and decide how to market them.
So it's not just checking a box or doing a worksheet and reading about it. It's actually getting your hands in it.
First graders are buzzing about science.
You're working together as a team.
They're learning insect anatomy and the importance of pollinators.
We find that if they're manipulating the pieces and putting them on the actual bead, they tend to retain the information better. That's why we're doing it as a project and not just a lecture.
There's a lot of sitting in the classroom, so we like to just get out, exert their energy.
Students stay active by engaging in fun fitness.
Mind taggers, eyes up here!
With fully credentialed PE teachers.
It's great for their social skills to be able to interact with their other students in gameplay, learning about teamwork.
It's time for lunch. Nutritious meals are available every day, free of charge. And our students take responsibility for their waste by participating in the district's food recycling program.
Mickey Mouse, Donald Duck, Mickey Mouse, Donald Duck!
Our kids are creative and self-confident. At Bernardo Elementary, each student performs onstage in one of our many musicals.
Ready, so breathe in through your nose.
Welcome to the Zen Den.
And out.
Here, our students reflect on how to deal with conflict and manage stress so they can interact positively with others.
It's just a space that isn't often provided in schools and it allows them to kind of like lower their anxieties and just be.
We gotta do a tomato cage on this one.
Our Mountaineers take pride in caring for their campus garden.
It's just great to see how some students just really engage with nature and they really, this is one of their highlights.
It was born as a tribute to a fourth grader who had a love for gardening.
First figure out how far it is from there to there.
Bernardo was the first school in the district to pilot the Lego robotics program. Every fifth grader gets hands-on experience, but some take the science and tech to the next level.
When we worked in the first Lego League, we had a group of mentors from one of the local high schools and they're doing Lego robotics on their level.
Each grade level participates in a school-wide community improvement project. It's just another example of how Bernardo's students possess the power to make their community and the world a better place.
All right, and next up, we'll go ahead and invite the principal Jeremy Lachey.
Thank you. That's really hard to see yourself on there. Do I sound like that in real life? I gotta change my voice. Good evening, President Paulson, members of the board, Dr. Bar and Cabinet. My name is Jeremy Lachey and I'm the proud principal of Bernardo Elementary School. Thank you for your time tonight to recognize some special Mountaineers from our school. Can I please have Haley, Annalise, and Xander come on up and join me? I asked them if they were ready to give their speeches and they were like, yeah, sure, no problem. They weren't nervous like Mr. Lachey is. First, before we do that, I'd like to recognize our parents and staff. They are exceptional in every way and have helped these students unlock their unlimited potential. Will the Bernardo staff and parents who are here with us tonight, please stand so we can recognize you. Thank you. All right, the first student that I'm excited to honor tonight is Haley Kasebeer. Haley is truly deserving of this recognition due to her unwavering perseverance, exceptional self-discipline, and kind spirit. She consistently demonstrates a strong work ethic, always pushing herself to achieve her best while maintaining strong character and a positive attitude. Through her dedication and resilient approach to learning, Haley is an exceptional student who sets an incredible example for everyone around her. We are grateful for her sharp mind, her big heart, and we have no doubt she will continue to make an incredible difference in this world. Congratulations, Haley. Oh, I thought I was supposed to take a picture, sorry. I was like, am I supposed to take the picture? I wasn't sure what was going on. Next up, I'm excited to honor Annalise Garcia Chavez. Annalise continually shows tremendous strength, courage, and grit to rise to incredible heights. She approaches challenges as opportunities for growth and is never afraid to enthusiastically step outside of her comfort zone. She is not just a student who does great work, but rather a highly engaged learner who takes ownership of her education and makes the most of each day. We are incredibly proud of Annalise and we can't wait to see what the future holds for her. Congratulations, Annalise. And next, I'm thrilled to honor Xander Lopez. Xander is an outstanding student who has made tremendous academic gains while maintaining an incredible sense of humor and imagination. His energy and enthusiasm, enthusiasm for learning and life are contagious to all those around him, and they were evidenced this year at Biz Town when he was asked to give the weather and traffic report for the TV station. He rocked it. And who knows, you might see him on your television someday, probably will. Xander is beloved by so many at Bernardo and we are grateful for all of the joy and laughter he brings to our lives each and every day. Congratulations, Xander.
All right, and next we have, we'll be able to showcase Del Dios Academy of Arts and Sciences and we have a video about them.
Welcome, my name is Michael Reichel. I'm the proud principal of Del Dios Academy of Arts and Sciences, the Del Dios Dragons, where our creed is to be safe, to be respectful, and to be responsible. Check out all the exciting things that are happening here.
At Del Dios Academy of Arts and Science, we provide an education that focuses on the whole child, to prepare our students to thrive in an ever-changing world. Kids kickstart their day with an advisory session.
Advisory is a great way for us to check in with them, to goal set with them.
And catch up on campus news with student-produced DD TV.
Hey Dragons, just a reminder that we're still selling your books.
At Del Dios, our Dragons work hard to develop healthy minds and bodies. In the fitness lab, these girls are getting physical conditioning down to a science and love the results.
Getting stronger, like physically, like you could tell a difference. And mentally, it's more like after this class, you're like more awake and aware.
How many items am I asking you to model, create, and print?
In our eighth grade STEM class, students are designing a customized object for one of their teachers. Pencil holders, a bathroom pass, a case for a gaming controller. The only limits are their imaginations.
Cutting edge technology, this is gonna be a technology that's gonna be disruptive and they're, they're right there.
Look, a class guinea pig.
So today we are building our terrariums.
The water cycle is a natural scientific process.
Evaporation.
These sixth graders know all about, thanks to this hands-on project. If done correctly, terrariums can water themselves for years.
I think one of my greatest rewards is when you just see them light up with something about science that they like.
This is art, so we do get a little messy in here.
This lesson about color schemes takes a playful approach.
By really try to focus on taking the fear out of making art because it's just about having fun.
It allows artists to free their minds to see how colors react to one another.
This is one place where they can just have fun while getting better at everything else they're already doing.
In this creative writing class, students are encouraged to explore their emotions so they can express themselves through language.
Gives these kids an opportunity to write what they want to write about, what's inside their hearts and minds and souls.
For their end-of-the-year project, these authors choose between writing a children's book, a collection of poetry, or a mini novel. The all original works are then sent to the district's print shop for publication.
They completely write the story and create all the graphics. They turn out, I mean, really amazing.
These students are using pretend currency to practice their math by ordering from real menus. Math intervention helps build fundamentals in small groups, giving kids a big boost in confidence.
And that's all it takes sometimes, having, just to feel good, to be able to walk into another classroom and actually have those basics, that foundation, so that they can do the harder math.
Our counseling team is on a mission to help students succeed.
How did you think you did this progress report?
Whether it's discussing grades, big feelings, or challenges at home, the counseling suite at Del Dios is a welcoming space for everyone.
Really want to empower them and uplift them to a point where they feel like they're working to their maximum potential.
Are you ready to rock? Intro to guitar for seventh and eighth graders teaches famous musical riffs and a passion for this popular instrument. It's one of the many enrichment opportunities at Del Dios that create well-rounded students, preparing them to make their communities and world a better place.
Great. And we'll invite up Principal Michael Reichel.
Good evening, Dr. Bar and Cabinet and President Paulson and the board. Nice to see you all. And welcome to all of you tonight, came out in the rain. I am Michael Reichel. I am the happy principal of Del Dios and I'd like to first of all, call up all of the students who are here tonight. And it's Alicia and Yvette and Aubrey. So come on up to the podium. And I'd like to also recognize all of our Del Dios employees and family members who made it out tonight. Could you please stand up and wave and let them know you're here? Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. All right, so let's get started with sixth grade and Alicia Gonzalez, first year at Del Dios. In Alicia's first year at Del Dios and in her short time with us, she's already made a lasting impression. Alicia is always positive and cares about everyone around her. She is super sweet and is always being respectful. Alicia exudes confidence and is dedicated to personal preparation and is committed to excellence. We are proud of all of her accomplishments and for this and more, are excited to name her Del Dios sixth grade student champion. Congratulations, Alicia. We can't wait to see all the amazing things you will do in the future. In seventh grade, we have Yvette Uloa. Yvette came into the school after it started and was a part of things in a very good way from the first day. She asks clarifying questions on things she needs help with. She helps others when she knows what she's doing. Yvette is a compassionate and thoughtful student who is always thinking of others. She goes out of her way to make sure all kids feel included and part of the school environment. She does all her work on time, participates, and does everything to a high standard. She is an absolute joy to have in class and is always polite and a great student. She has spoken up for things when she needs help and I appreciate her ability to be in a struggle but stay so positive. Look out for others that need it and find ways to stay productive. Her willingness to help others, take initiative, and work hard has made a positive difference at Del Dios. Congratulations, Yvette. And last but not least, our eighth grade leader, Aubrey Kelly. Aubrey Kelly is a scholar, a leader, and a prime example of what it means to be an excellent student. Her achievements have ranged from shining in her advanced math class, language arts, advanced class, and physical conditioning to leading our students as the school's ASB president. Additionally, her studiousness and focus earned her a four-point-oh GPA every trimester she has been at Del Dios and I predict will continue until the very end. Thank you, Aubrey, for your outstanding leadership and dedication to education this year. You truly made Del Dios a better place with your kind-hearted positivity and thoughtful intellect. Congratulations, Aubrey.
All right, and next we're gonna go ahead and have a, we have a video about Limitless Learning Academy.
Launched in the fall of twenty twenty-one, Limitless Learning Academy is Escondido Union School District's newest model of hybrid instruction. This innovative blended learning program offers a choice for students to attend entirely online or in a combination of virtual and on-campus participation. Core instruction in English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies is delivered virtually over Zoom from eight AM to twelve PM. Mentor meetings with teachers are scheduled every day, virtually or on-campus, offering guidance, tutoring, and feedback for students, guardians, and family members. Students have opportunities to participate in person on campus two afternoons per week. Limitless Learning Academy provides fun and engaging enrichment time with various activities such as art, dance, coding, and more, including Spirit Week once a month and holiday activities. Limitless Learning Academy, in partnership with students, families, and staff, is committed to engaging learners in rigorous virtual and hybrid learning experiences to generate creativity, communication, critical thinking, collaboration, and to build connections with each other and the world.
So Principal Reichel will be highlighting limitless students as well as home education.
Thank you. Very proud to have been the founding principal of Limitless Learning Academy. Thank you. Very proud to have been the founding principal of Limitless Learning Academy. It's been a wonderful journey of creation and innovation. And I would like to, first of all, call up our students. One of them cannot be with us tonight, unfortunately. So Daniel and Yvette, can you come and join me up at the podium? And Renata couldn't be here, her family's out of town, but we're gonna still celebrate her nonetheless. So we'd like to acknowledge all of our limitless family that are here today, staff and families. Would you please rise and wave and be acknowledged? Thank you for being here. And also for home education, we had welcomed them last year to our campus. So anyone here from home education, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you. We'll start with the limitless students and we'll start with Daniel. Daniel Saron, a true embodiment of what it means to be a Liger at LLA. He's been honored with the Student Excellence Award for his remarkable approach to learning and personal growth. Though quiet by nature, his considerate demeanor shines through as he consistently extends a helping hand to peers in need, demonstrating both empathy and leadership. Daniel faces challenges with unwavering determination, expressing his authentic self with confidence while developing valuable life skills that will serve him well beyond the classroom. His eagerness to participate in every educational opportunity reflects his deep commitment to learning, making him an exemplary student whose quiet strength inspires those around him. Congratulations, Dan. Next, in absentia, we're going to celebrate Renata Navarro. Rennie is without exception an excellent student. She strives to participate fully in every lesson, to complete every task, and check that her work and her understanding is correct. She asks questions to clear up confusions, double checks her thinking, and deepens her understanding. We can see Rennie's excellence when she is helping others and answering their questions as well. Rennie is an excellent facilitator in class and in groups, making sure group work is shared and started right away. She is an excellent timekeeper, making sure that students stay focused on the task at hand. And she's an excellent harmonizer, looking for opportunities to include quiet students. Without a doubt, Rennie is a shining example of EUSD student and richly deserves this award. So let's give her a round of applause. And our elder statesman, and we just want to say congratulations. She just had a baby girl in her family born yesterday and the family still made it out today. So thank you for being here. Yvette Reyna Gutierrez. Yvette is an excellent student who has utilized the growth mindset to achieve success during her eighth grade year at LLA. She participates in class, helps her peers with complex math concepts, facilitates breakout groups, and puts forth effort in everything she does. Yvette is an excellent example of an LLA student who epitomizes the pillars of the LLA way. She understands the world, embraces challenges, expresses who she is with confidence, develops tools for life, and explores her own pathway. And she's also an excellent artist. With that said, Yvette Reyna Gutierrez is well-deserving of EUSD's Student Excellence Award. Congratulations. And last but not least, from our home education program, I'm proud to introduce Valerie Mendoza Resendiz. Valerie is a fifth grader who attended Lincoln School from kindergarten through fourth grade, but then moved to Fallbrook last summer. Luckily for us, her parents chose to request a transfer so she could stay in EUSD and enroll in the home education program. She immediately showed herself to be warm, kind, friendly, positive, and eager to learn. Valerie is taught at home by her mom and aunt, who both go above and beyond to provide a wonderful, high-quality education that both supports and challenges Valerie. It is so fun to have Valerie on our morning Zoom meetings and for her to attend weekly language arts workshops and monthly field trips. Valerie has already improved greatly in eye-ready and on all academic skills she is practicing at home, especially writing. We are pleased to present the Student Excellence Award to both Valerie and to her teachers at home as well. Congratulations. All right, thank you all very much. We are going to take a five-minute break to allow all parents and families to make their way home. So thank you all for coming again. Congratulations to everyone. Thank you to our parents, and we will reconvene at 7:40. Number of public comments tonight. I do thank the everybody for coming out to comment tonight. We do have a three-minute limit per comment, and you will hear a chime. We just ask you to try to stick to that as best you can. Our first speaker tonight is Mo Perdomo.
Hi there. So this is in regard to LLA and possibly the closing. So I just wanna, I guess, ask you as a parent to a parent, just wanna, if you guys could be in that mind frame, that, that lens. So my kid goes there and my kid is thriving educationally. She's secure emotionally, socially. She's built trust with the system that nurtures her whole, whole brain, her whole childlike personality and has experienced the safest educational experience ever. And, you know, I'm not just talking about our kid, my kid, but I'm also talking about the kids that go there. You know, I was part of the PTA for a while, worked along with Principal Reichel with teachers. And we, we just want to let you know that, you know, as I, as I talk, like, that's just progress of what I've seen in my kid. I wanna let you know, in the past meeting that you guys had, this is how you described LLA. And I quote, "It's a beneficial program. Let's not remove the support the students need." Some of these students really have needs. That's part of my kids and a lot of the kids that we've seen. Teachers and staff do demonstrate tremendous, do a tremendous job. Teachers have done a great job of engendering a spirit. I think maintaining the spirit of what they've developed there is the important thing. It's what we wish for every student if we could. I want you to listen to that. This is your words. "It's what we wish for every student if we could." As a parent, I believe that taking away this, that you believe, what we wish for every student, fortunately is what we have as a reality. That's what my kid has, every kid has. And as I speak about this, I want to let you know, I, you know, I don't want this to be a wish. This is actually what it is. I don't want this to end. So, and if that happens, what's gonna happen is we're gonna regress. I'm a, I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist, and I'll tell you this. My kid feels loved, secure, safe. These are the epitome of attachment things. And I, I'd love for you to know that as a parent, it's hard to find that. My kid has anxiety. I know a lot of our kids have either autism or they don't, they, they've been bullied. They feel like they don't belong. And man, I, you know, as a, I worked for San Diego School District for about five years, and I haven't seen kids as happy as, as, I think you saw the, the film, these kids thrive here. I'm just asking you guys today to, to think about your words. These are your words. These are your realities. I would love for you tonight to weigh and discern your own words, the words of our realities, our kids that are at times suffering from anxiety, from depression. They come here, they thrive. Education, with their education, I want you to be logical. I can affirm that this is working 100% for our kids, our community. It meets their needs. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd like to make a real quick comment. We will have an update at the next workshop, which is what, March 20th? So please stay tuned because we've been working with the staff. We had parent input, so we'll have an update on where we stand on that. Okay?
All right, next up is Kristy Perdomo.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Kristy Perdomo, as you just heard. I've been a member of the Escondido community all my life. Our daughter, Kiana, as you heard from my husband, is a student at Limitless Learning Academy, and she's been there since its inception. I remember the very first meeting that we had as parents. We were invited to attend a meeting with Mr. Reichel. And this was just before the school started. And I remember coming away from that meeting feeling like we were understood. We were heard by a principal who was gonna do everything in his power to make that school as amazing as it could be. We knew we needed to be a part of it, so that's why my husband and I joined the PTA. We enrolled Kiana right away. And working alongside of Mr. Reichel and the LLA staff was really easy because their passion translated into actions every day. And we saw all the students begin to thrive almost immediately. I am here today to tell you that this school is a success. Our students are happy and they're thriving as they learn from amazing staff and they make friends with their peers and they grow into the best adolescents they can be. I wish I was here simply just to celebrate that rather than to fight for it because it may be on your chopping block. The success that LLA has enjoyed this far is really due to a combination of the structure of the school, coupled with a high-quality and deeply passionate staff. The students enjoy the safety of it being a standalone school. Our student body is made up of kids with learning disabilities, social anxiety, and experiences being bullied at other schools in the district. We have many students with IEPs, students who just need a little bit of extra help and a little bit of extra support. They don't have to worry about fitting in with other students from another school on another campus. They are not visitors from a program. They are equal partners who help create the culture of safety that our school so proudly displays on a daily basis. The staff are a crucial piece of that culture as well. Many of our school staff have been there since its inception. They put the blood, sweat, and tears into making it what it is today, and they remain because they believe in it. And it is working. Our kids are succeeding in this environment in ways that they would never be able to in another educational setting. I implore you, please don't change something that actually works just to save a buck. Recruit more students to LLA so they too can take part in the success. If you want to save money, please look at other line items. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Almaguerra.
My name is Almaguerra. I am a parent. I've also lived here in Escondido all my life. I am a proud Leagun Lion. I know we don't have grand panthers anymore, but was there and also cougar. So, and I'm very happy that, you know, life has brought me around and moved me back to, to Escondido to be able to raise my kids in this beautiful city and community. And I come to you as a mother of a fifth grader, fourth grader, and first grader, who are all high-functioning autistic. And so I'm a busy mom. And so I'm here today to speak on behalf of many families whose children have found success at Limitless Learning Academy. And I apologize if I'm reading. I'm very nervous and very passionate and an emotional mama, so. Successes that was not possible in traditional brick-and-mortar school. While a standard classroom setting works for some, it does not fit all students, especially those with unique learning needs. For children like mine who are high-functioning autistic, the traditional school model was not just difficult, it was detrimental. Before Limitless Learning Academy, my children struggled with the sensory overload, rigid schedules, and constant discipline for behavior tied to their neurodiversity. Many parents here share similar experiences. Our children were bullied, isolated, and made to feel different. Instead of receiving support, they were placed on performance plans or disciplined for struggling in an environment that wasn't built for them. The anxiety and emotional toll was immense. This is not an anecdotal. The statistics on bullying among special needs students are alarming. A 2012 survey by the Interactive Autism Network found that 63% of autistic children in the United States have been bullied. Additionally, in the United Kingdom, 82% of children with learning disabilities reported being bullied, highlighting a pattern that extends beyond our community. These students already face higher rates of victimization, anxiety, and mental health challenges. Yet they are often placed in environments where they are not supported and instead are subject, subjected to constant stress. LLA changed that. The school provided the structure, flexibility, and understanding that allowed our children to thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. Here, they are part of a community where their differences are not just tolerated, but embraced. For working parents like myself, homeschooling is not an option. And LLA filled the gap where both traditional school and home education fell short. While I understand that the current plan is to move forward with fourth grade and above, I ask to, I ask you to consider the younger students who will be left behind, my first grader right now. Many first graders at LLA have been in the same classroom since kindergarten, forming bonds and benefiting from the consistency of this program, that this program provides. I urge the board to consider keeping the second grade level open for the next school year and closing it off after that, and continuing the same process with the third grade thereafter. This would allow students who have already benefited from this program to continue thriving in school rather than being forced into an environment that has already failed them. And I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, I would like to, like to call up, I believe Jennifer Morrow and Gwen Uribe are coming up together. Is that correct?
We have two cards and four people. Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Abara. My name is Jennifer Morrow, and I'm principal at Classical Academy Middle School. And so I wanted to just thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight and for your ongoing support of the Classical Academies. So I am joined here by our musical theater teacher, Kara Howard, and then two of our student actors, Gwen and Genesis. And so we have an upcoming production that we would love to tell you about, and we have a special invitation for you as well. So I'm gonna turn the mic over to our student Gwen for her to tell you a little bit about musical theater.
Hello, board members and Dr. Abara. My name is Gwen, and I want to thank you for supporting our school. Being part of musical theater has helped me grow in ways that I have never imagined. I've learned to step out of my comfort zone, work as a team, and believe in myself. The encouragement from our teachers and the support of our school community have made a huge impact on me, and I'm so grateful for this opportunity.
Hello, members of the board and Dr. Abara. Thank you for your support of the Classical Academies and for giving us academic choice. I am not only a musical theater teacher at Classical Academy, but my kids are lifers, kindergarten through 12th grade. Just had a graduate, and my son is a sophomore. And our school is more, middle school theater is more than just about the production. It's a powerful experience that brings students of all talents and backgrounds, families, and community together. Students learn how to be good leaders, speak boldly with confidence, learn regard for one another, and to think beyond themselves. They learn the important skill of delayed gratification, all while fostering creativity and teamwork. These critical life skills last far beyond the stage. and can be used throughout their entire lives. Not only do our productions affect our school community, but the local communities as well. Hundreds of students from Juniper Elementary and Felicita Elementary are able to attend our productions, and in some cases, it is their very first experience with live theater. It's so special that we're able to give them this gift. So we'd love to invite you to experience the magic for yourselves. And as a token of our appreciation, we are gifting each of you tickets to our upcoming production of Shrek the Musical at the California Center for the Arts Escondido. So I'm going to have Genesis give you the information on how to get your complimentary tickets to our production. It is going to be the first weekend in April. We have eight, eight performances. And there's an email on here that you can email for more information on the tickets, and we'd love for you to come. So thank you so much for believing in our school and for the arts and our students. We appreciate you.
So just email, you can email on there, and that's how you can get your tickets.
Thank you all very much. Next up is Marissa Johnson.
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Dr. Abara. Let me start by first introducing myself. My name is Marissa Johnson. I'm a former public school teacher and a parent of a preschooler who will be enrolled in our TK program and receives special ed services. I was hoping to gain some understanding about how recent presidential actions I find deeply disturbing could trickle down to EUSD. As you might already be aware, there was a presidential executive order issued January twenty ninth, twenty twenty-five called Ending Radical Indoctrination in K-12 Schooling. This executive order threatened to withhold federal funding for any school district who affirms a student's gender, as well as teaching history the Trump administration deems as critical race theory. I quote from the executive order, "Innocent children are compelled to adopt identities as either victims or oppressors solely based on their skin color. In other instances, young men and women are made to question whether they were born in the wrong body. To be clear, as a former teacher, I know that that is not what is going on in our schools. As a former history teacher, I believe the role of public education is imperative to our students, our community, and our nation. Part of that commitment is teaching our students the truth about our history with all its many nuances and flaws of our past. Teaching about our nuanced history of conquering slavery, etc., does not teach students to become victims or oppressors. Learning about our past informs our present and forges a more equitable future. I also believe that it is essential that our schools honor students as they are by honoring their pronouns and treating our children with dignity and respect. Therefore, I find it deeply troubling that the president has issued an executive order that threatens these important initiatives by threatening to cut off federal funding. A dear colleague letter recently sent out by the Department of Education also stated ending federal funding for DEI initiatives. The media has also reported that another executive order could be on the way regarding dismantling the Department of Education or redirecting its many functions to other departments of government. While I do not wish to be political and do not want to remain alarmist, my goal in commenting during tonight's board meeting is to gain clarity on how much federal funding we receive. What is EUSD doing to fortify our budget against such actions that could restrict our federal funding? Will EUSD be a district that caters to the president and adjusts our curriculum or protection of students in order to maintain our federal funding? If there are significant changes to the Department of Education that provides for Title I funding and special ed resources, how can we ensure that students with disabilities get the services that they need? Thank you for your time and all you do for your students in Escondido.
Thank you very much. And I believe that the budget presentation may answer some of those questions. But thank you. I, there are no public hearings tonight. We are looking for a report from CSEA Chapter one fifty. Seeing nobody here, triple yay.
Good evening, President Paulson, school board members, Dr. Abara, and Cabinet. I had a very interesting evening on Tuesday when I attended the Escondido High School Board Meeting. It was a joy, Doug, let me tell you. I want to begin by saying that the High School District's School Board Meeting left a lot to be desired. I'm thankful for all of you despite our differences as I feel that our school board hears us and actively collaborates with us to find the best solutions for our students. Sometimes our collaboration takes time as we all have very differing opinions on what we find is top priority in our district. There was a clear lack of understanding of the general workings of education, and I feel it's very important for our school board members to understand and value all moving parts of a school district. The layoffs that the High School District's School Board approved was appalling. One of my former students, a shining product of Escondido Schools, lost her job. This wasn't a budgetary decision. This was a decision by leaders who don't value their employees. My former student, Thea, emailed me this evening and said, "Thank you for showing up for us. Your strength gave me hope and inspired me to not just give up and let this happen. All I did was show up. My action was stronger than my words." And I mention all of this because I want it made clear that we recognize that our district will do everything it can to maintain programs that are of the utmost importance to our students and value the staff that work with our students every day. That is our continued hope. With that being said, thank you. I do want to stress that although we are on the right track in many ways, we still continue to fall short. I've noticed that there is a lot of focus on what we're doing wrong and not what we're doing right. I would like the district to focus on the people in our district who are doing it right. Motivate them further to be the change we all want to see and influence those who have not yet seen the path to success through taking risks and through positive encouragement. It's so easy to keep doing what we're doing, expecting teachers and staff just to work harder, but it's the not, it's not the right thing to do. Doing what's right isn't always easy, but in the long run, doing what's right becomes easy as it becomes the expectation. The leaders in this district that our staff want to see are leaders who inspire, leaders who lead by example and have compassion for their staff and students. We do not need leaders who make unrealistic demands and devalue the strength and successes of their staff. We don't need to unnecessarily make our teachers feel like failures and micromanage away their creativity, their voice, and their out-of-the-box thinking. It's really easy to make decisions without stepping into the shoes of those whom your decisions affect. Let's ask the leaders who don't have what it takes to inspire their staff to move on. For the remainder of my presidency, I will be helping teachers in their classrooms to be present with what's happening in our district. I've been out of the classroom for two and a half years and I miss it. In order for me to be an effective leader and a voice for this association, I need to know that what I share here is through experience. I'm up for the challenge, willing to do the work, and hoping you will join me in this adventure. Let's be the change and let's do that together. Thank you.
And Brandy, I, I think I would just like to express my appreciation at our constant communication, although we do not always agree, and I know I'm not always anybody's favorite person. At a minimum, at a minimum, our district communicates with our teachers' union, with our classified union. I, I honestly believe that our meetings every quarter are, are vital, and I, I think it's a model that other districts would benefit from so that we're not only meeting up once a month as adversaries. So, you know, thank you to all of the teachers in our district, all the classified staff for keeping lines of communication open, and for when we do go to schools for welcoming us there. Again, our presence on campuses is a model for other districts. So thank you. Anybody else we set? All right. Moving on to item F1. Do we have consent agenda? Does anybody have any items that they would like pulled for separate consideration or questions on the consent agenda?
I just had one comment on the school plans for student achievement that were in there. I feel like those are always overlooked in eight hundred and thirty-eight pages. So I just encourage everyone to take, this is not the venue to review them or talk about them, but just to take time to see what each school is putting their time and effort into and where they're directing their funds and their efforts, and what kind of results they're getting from that. I think it's really important.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Ms. Harper moves, Ms. Mr. Olson seconds. All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Moving on to item M1, Business Services Update to Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, fourteen, Emergency Waiver.
When we have an emergency waiver that precludes us from going through the bidding process so we can do some emergency repairs to any of our facilities, we're also required to report back to the board at every subsequent meeting until the emergency is over. The update on this, this was regards to a delivery truck striking the overhang walkway at Felicita Elementary. Thanks to the board for declaring that emergency. That work has actually been completed, and this will be the final update for this emergency. Thank you. No action needed, just an update.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item N1, Second Interim Report.
Good evening, President Paulson, Board members, Cabinet. This evening, we're seeking your approval on our budget as of January thirty-first, our second interim. The last time you saw this was actually not that long ago. It was just two weeks at our board's day session. However, tonight, we're going to go into more detail as to what the changes were between first and second interim. As always, we've done the math for you, and we'll go into what the changes are. On the revenue side, there's an increase of four million dollars. The majority of that is related to Medi-Cal. As we previously discussed, the state has amended the program and how we can seek our reimbursable, reimbursements. We were able to amend all of our claims as, going back as far as fiscal year fifteen, sixteen. That's amendment has netted us a one-time funding of three million dollars. What we plan on doing with that funding is we're going to, we're going to move some of our salaries that are in the unrestricted column into the restricted column. You'll be able to see how that plays out in our NYPD. The other is related to our interest. The cash that we have in our county treasurer earns interest in it. We've received two, two quarters worth so far this year. Based off of what we've received, we're reevaluating where we think we're going to be at the end of this fiscal year, which is a positive change. For expenses, the five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, at the time of first interim, we were still working with our labor groups, and we had not captured the final agreement. We're going ahead and doing that now at second interim. For the transfers out and incorporating the EUSD plan, we've moved some of our expenses into the most restricted funding sources, freeing up money in our unrestricted column, which allows us to now pay off our Apple leases that we would have had to make payments in the next two fiscal years. Any questions before Andy goes into the details of the NYPD?
Thank you, Michelle. Great opening. So as we talked about the multi-year projections to those changes that she just went over are reflected here in our first, the first section there, the, what's now the second interim of our current year's adopted budget. And that's the action that's before you tonight to adopt the revision to our adopted budget. So as you can see here, one point I wanted to make in the second year is we talked about the study session. So that second column that the blue top there, twenty-five, twenty-six, that's what we worked on a lot in our study session in a couple of weeks ago. And one thing I did want to point out on that, and, and speaking to a comment we received earlier, we did set aside in that study session, we spoke about setting aside some money in order to offset any impacts that we might see, at least in the temporary basis, to give us time for planning if there is a reduction or an elimination of any federal funds. And so that's what that four million dollars that's down there in this commitment here, here, for federal budget stability in case those funds are reduced. And also, what's reflected in there is a lot of the things we spoke about at the study session, and, and some of that work of transferring our funds or ESD plan, that concept that we brought up last year for the current year's adopted budget of utilizing some of our one-time monies in order to offset our unrestricted general fund expenses, which, that's the six million dollars on top here now. Previously, many of these budget presentations, it's been a red number, a projected cuts. We've actually been able to, transferring some of our expenses and budget reductions, have been able to remove six million dollars of expenses from our unrestricted general fund for next year. Now that would be finalized and brought before you for our adopted budget in June. So we'll be presenting that to you then. And that's when we would be asking for the board to vote. Tonight's just a budget revision for the current year budget. No decisions will be voted on until June. That's reflected on that column. But that's the work that we've been able to do so far. And then we still project a need for a reduction in expenses in our unrestricted general fund of one and a half million in the twenty-six, twenty-seven year. And altogether, that leads us to having an Indian Fund balance of twenty-three million dollars as we stand now. Now, when we come back before you in June for that budget presentation for adopted budget, which we showed you the study session, it's not here now because we're still talking about the current year only, would be that fourth year in that of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year. And so you'll see that again in June and the impact of all of the decisions we're making in expenses and revenues as we move forward into that fourth year, which will be our third year of our adopted budget. So this is our multi-year projection as of our second interim. Is there any questions on this before I move on? I think we talked a lot about it last a couple of weeks ago. Okay. And as I always like to present, the graphical representation of our Indian Fund balances in the forecaster, here's our updated version of the forecaster. Now with the new second interim, that's the light blue line on top. You remember from that presentation before, we talked about that blue circle that's sitting right there, just above the black line. That blue circle represents our people. And I know that's one of the, the main priority for us is to protect our people. And that's what the blue circle is. And at this point, those blue people, the blue circle people. I knew I was going to get that twisted up, is protected as it stands now in our multi-year projection. Also, it came up at the study session a couple of weeks ago was a question about, we talked about absences, and we wanted to talk about absences by grade level. So we threw together this chart here, and so I'll walk you through it on the left here, and this chart, and then the columns here reflect what numbers are in this chart. So these are actually total student absence days by grade level. Here, so you can see that over the course of this year up until February twenty-eighth, we've had a hundred and twenty-one thousand days, student absent days, right? So we only have fourteen thousand kids, but every time a kid's absent, totals up to that number. But then just for perspective, we got added the average daily attendance rate by grade level. And so you can see here, I'll take that off so you can see it clearer, sorry. The attendance rate by grade level there up through February twenty-eighth for the current year. And then that chart on the side there is, is just charting out the absence days, but then with the ADA on top of each of those columns. And you can see the TK number is quite low. That's because that's total student absent days. There's just over half of our student population in TK as there is in kindergarten. So there's just a lot less students. So that's why there's a lot less student days. Because as you can see, that actually has the highest absence rate or the lowest attendance. Because as you can see, that actually has the highest absence rate or the lowest attendance rate in our TK program. Speaking of someone who's recently had kids of that age, it's difficult to keep them healthy and going to school at that age. But you can also see, interestingly enough, I should have started off with the pop quiz or the, the question of what grade level do you think has the best attendance? As you can see here, it's fifth grade. So progressively it gets better and then it starts to kind of decline again as we get into seventh and eighth grade there. But our fifth graders are going to school the strongest this current year. Is there any questions on this? And that came up with the study session? Any follow-up questions on this data as we see it here? Okay. All right, so now we're going to get into future outlook. And so there's a lot of information coming out now from the state and state agencies about what will become the state's adopted budget. The Legislative Analyst Office, they do all the calculations on the cost of programs and the future outlook of the budget for the state. So I'm going to walk you through some of the things that, some of the, the points. I don't want to call them high points because they're not all good. So first, the governor's proposal in January proposed to increase the TK add-on. So that's an additional amount of money we get per TK student because the, of the requirement to have a second adult in those classrooms. The governor had proposed nearly a doubling of that add-on. The Legislative Analyst Office, actually looking at the state's finances and the cost of the TK program, is recommending to the governor to increase that by a lower amount. But either way, it's still a recommended increase. So I put down there that if the governor's proposal were to come to pass in the state's final adopted budget, that would be worth about two and a half million dollars more in revenue for our district. If they go with the LAO's recommendation, it'd be about one point one million dollars more in revenue specifically to help us with our extra adult in our TK program. Now, as I put on that final bullet there, when the state finally adopts its budget at the end of June, they could take the governor's proposal, the LAO recommendation, or none of the above, something in the middle. And so that remains to be seen, we'll continue to watch for that. Of course, in May, when they do the May revision to the governor's January proposal, we'll get some more indication of where they're at with that. And then obviously in June, when they finally adopt our budget. And if they do adopt it, if in May, if they go with either one of these recommendations, we'll have that included in our adopted budget because that's based on our May, the May revision. And then if they change it from that, then that's what we would come back and present to you at the time we do our unaudited actuals or our forty-five day revision in August. Any questions on that topic first? Okay. Attendance recovery, that's a good thing. So there's a new law that comes into effect for the next fiscal year, the next school year, that allows us more opportunities to recover attendance for students that are absent. So currently, Saturday school is an option, you know, for all districts, but they're adding to that to where we can recover attendance through our after-school program and also Saturday school and other activities we do around our school day. And I included, and you'll see in the update for you all tomorrow, some more information about that. They kind of released some information for the audit guide, so like the rules for that. And then just kind of quickly, it requires there that, that time in our after-school program to be spent with a certificated teacher. And then there's a ratio cap on that of ten to one for TK and kinderkids and twenty to one for any, all the other grades, all the way up through twelfth grade. And then, so we're still waiting to see more details on that, but also using those details to develop a program here, obviously, for us to recover attendance, absences and to recover that ADA for that. But also given the opportunity for those kids to, because also the certificated teachers that would do this, there needs to be lessons given that are similar to what be done in class. So it gives those kids an opportunity for time that they missed to catch up on some of that lost learning. Okay, and now back to, I kind of put a good thing in the middle here, and now we're back to something that's not so good. And that's where, when we first last talked to you about this, our first interim, we were working off of a planned COLA for next year of two point nine three percent. And then in the January proposal, that was reduced to two point four three, and that actually is a reduction of about nine hundred thousand dollars to our budget revenues for next year. And that's unfortunate because we use those future year COLAs, the projections that they give us for planning for, for multiple years, for specifically for those years in our NYPD. And so we built our plans and, and, and what we're doing going forward based on that two point nine three. And then January, we got that kind of demoralizing news that that reduction of that COLA, which we experienced in the current year. But then the LAO is now looking at the state's revenues and tax revenues are down compared to their projections. And so the LAO is now recommending or estimating that that COLA might actually come in at two point two percent, which is an additional four hundred thousand dollars in reduction in revenue for next year. So all in all, since December, well, it's about one point three million dollars less in expected revenue for next year. If, and that are estimates, that's not a recommendation necessarily. That's based on the calculations that they would use and that the governor would use in the state legislature when they finally adopt their budget of what the COLA would be. So we're going to watch that closely and see where that COLA finally comes in. We may not know, they'll say something in May, probably closer to the two point two. We'll see how it lands when it comes to June as well. So that's like the, the big ticket item for us to be watching in any news that comes out around the state budget. Any questions now? Okay. So our next steps, we'll be having a study session on a variety of topics. I think Dr. Barr mentioned one of them already on March twentieth. Then that May revision that comes out in May. And we'll be attending, some of us here in this room will be attending the workshop from School Services where we get into all the details of the May revision and then what that means. And we'll be using that information for adopting our budget. And we'll report back, obviously, for those that didn't get to go to that workshop, anything we learned from that. And then, of course, in June, we'll be adopting the budget for next year. And all of the work that we're doing, again, I threw it up there again, the blue circle, because that's again, our priority when it comes to the budget, when it comes to our planning, when it comes to our educational programs and everything that we do here is, in EUSD, is do everything we can to protect our people. Now it's questions.
Thank you, I just had a comment because I'll be very nice about this, but like, I really appreciate us being proactive and really trying to create stability for our district and for our staff. And exactly what you said, protect the blue people and make sure they are valued and they know they have a home here in EUSD. We've had, I mean, since COVID, it's been up and down. And I think being able to have a stable future and think ahead and make changes as we need to really protect our programs that are working and protect our staff is really important. And you don't see that at a lot of districts. So I really appreciate that that's one of our core focuses here and that we're actually following through with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Uh, this is an action item, isn't it?
Yes.
All right, looking for a motion to approve the second interim report. Mr. Olson moves, Ms. Gardner seconds, please vote. All right, motion passes five to zero, moving on, item N two, the transportation plan.
All right, me to get him over here now. So every year, the state requires us now, for the last couple of years, to adopt a transportation plan. And with an emphasis on asking districts to explore, explore options to expand transportation services. Now we know in our district, we provide transportation for our special education students to get to some of the schools that those programs exist at. And although the state would like us to explore increasing our transportation services well beyond that, they also don't provide funding for that. But in order for us to maintain the funding that we do get, we must adopt this plan in an annual basis. And if you read that plan, what it would say to that is that our plan at this point, and I hate saying this, is to continue to plan for that opportunity for, for expanded transportation services. But at this point in time, we do not have the revenue to start a transportation program beyond our special education program. So before you deny it as an action item, to adopt this transportation plan, which essentially is no change from the last year's plan.
More paperwork. That's all it is.
It is, it is a fantastic plan that we have seen before. We might see it again.
Every year, without fail.
And we are looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Gardner moves, Mr. Houston seconds, all in favor, please vote. Motion passes five to zero, moving on to our next highly exciting Business Services action item.
Okay, so this is an action item, asking the board to declare an emergency for a significant roof leak issue that we had at Rincon Middle School in one of the buildings, or at least in half of one of the buildings. And we've done, we've already started that work because obviously we needed to, we are, we had to tear out some walls and repair some of the, of water damage that happened because of that leak. And that's already happened. And we had a contractor working last week all the way in the, in every evening so we could avoid disrupting the school day. And worked all the way till Saturday, they were able to complete the repair of the roof section where the leak was happening. We still have some more work to do on the other half of the building where it was not leaking, but it's, it's a kind of an interesting building where there's pot areas in the middle, but there's a contiguous roof on the sides. And so we will complete the rest of that repair once it stops raining here. But that's the section that's not leaking. So the area that is, that was leaking is now repaired, the leak is stopped, and we'll be able to get in and now repair those walls and get everybody moved, the two rooms that people had to move out of back in there. And so this is just to declare that emergency because we had to get that work going before we could do the bidding process. Now, we also, just in the future, we are going to be putting out a bid and you'll see that when we, to award that contract, I think in the next couple of meetings, for us to repair the other buildings that have the same construction, same age of roof at that school. They were not currently leaking, so they wouldn't technically qualify as part of the emergency. But again, they're not currently leaking, but we want to be able to repair those as well during our spring break period. And so you'll see a contract come before you, that, that bid is out now. And you'll see a contract come before you so that we can do that work during spring break. And that way, we can avoid there being any new leaks in any of those buildings going forward. So we're, the action item is to declare the emergency for the current roof leak.
Very good, thank you.
I'll move. Second.
Ms. Harper moves, Ms. Gardner seconds, please vote. Motion passes five to zero, we will look forward to seeing the updates at each meeting on that work. Student expulsion cases.
Regarding case number twenty-two-four dash twenty-five dash oh four, the board considered action upon student reinstatement. The vote, board voted to suspend the panel's recommendation for expulsion as follows and place the student on a district behavior contact and to remain at Del Dios Academy of Arts and Science.
All right, that is the motion, looking for a second? All right, Mr. Olson has moved, Ms. Gardner seconds. All in favor, please vote. Motion passes five to zero.
All right, regarding student expulsion. Yeah, sorry. Regarding student expulsion case number twenty-two-four dash twenty-five dash zero five, the board voted to approve the panel recommendation for full expulsion as follows, full expulsion through November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five with placement at JCCS.
All right, Mr. Olson moves. Mr. Houston seconds, please note that we will need to change the wording in this motion to be to take out the word reinstatement. Please vote. Motion passes five to zero, moving on to item M six, Rincon Middle School Closure.
Yes, we are asking to adopt a resolution, and this is in regards to the school closure of Rincon on January seventh due to the gas shut-off. And this will allow for our ELOP programming, not to suffer any penalties for not fulfilling the program requirements. Also, it allows to be able to recoup any ADA loss.
Looking for a motion.
I'll move.
Ms. Harper moves, Mr. Olson seconds, please vote. Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to item N seven, Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators.
Yes, I'm looking for approval for, of this declaration, which contains our estimated number of emergency permits, limited assignments and internship credentials that will be requested during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Move approval.
Ms. Gardner moves, Mr. Houston seconds, please vote. Motion passes five to zero, moving on to item N seven, MOU with AAA.
I'm seeking approval of the MOU with AAA related to the Community Schools Grant. This is the first annual renewal of the grant, for the grant that originated during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We also have attached a calendar that outlines the workdays delineated in the MOU.
I move approval.
Ms. Harper moves, Mr. Paulson seconds. Please vote. Sorry, I beat you to it. I get one a night. And motion passes five to zero. Moving on to item N nine. And this is our Resolution twenty-two-four, twenty-five dash nineteen, Ms. Frank.
I'm seeking adoption of our yearly review and elimination of identified vacant classified positions for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
All right, in light of what has happened in the community over the last week, can we clarify for everybody? Are there any individuals who are currently attached to these positions who are going to be terminated?
No.
There are, so just to clarify, we are not laying anybody off.
Correct.
These are vacant positions that we're eliminating.
Correct.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve. Ms. Gardner moves, Ms. Harper seconds, all in favor, please vote. Motion passes five to zero, moving on to item N ten.
So this is a project with the UC San Diego Ready School Management to provide up to four graduate-level students and up to four hundred hours of data analytical support to the district from March to June of this year.
And what sort of information are they going to be gathering?
Various data sets, looking at our student achievement data, our attendance, our Framework for the Future data, just various data sets and stuff that we're already reporting on.
And I assume that we'll see the results.
We'll see the results and any data involved will belong to the district.
All right, thank you very much. Questions?
Motion to approve as recommended.
I'll second.
Mr. Olson moves. Ms. Harper seconds. Please vote. Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to the superintendent's office.
Yes, this resolution is to excuse the two board members who were absent last, last meeting. That was Mrs. Gardner and Mr. Olson for illness.
I move approval.
Ms. Harper moves. Mr. Houston seconds. Please vote.
So it's been a long time. Do we have to abstain?
Yes, if you are involved in this, you abstain. And this was not the last meeting. This was the February fourth meeting. Is that correct? Okay. Yeah, yeah. And that passes three to zero with two abstentions. Moving on to item N twelve, CSBA Delegate Assembly Election. And so I think I'm running this one. Is that correct? All right, so we have got, well, I've got a list somewhere. Yeah, it's okay. All right, so we have got up to six votes for CSBA Delegate Assembly. Does any member have someone that they would like to put on our slate of nominees? All right, so I would propose Barbara Avalos of National School District, Rena Morocco of Vista USD, Cipriano Vargas of Vista, Bob Weller of the Escondido Union High School District. Those are the four that I, that I was looking at. Does anybody have anybody else that they would like to nominate? All right, then our slate of four would be for Cipriano Vargas, Bob Weller, Rena Morocco and Barbara Avalos.
I'll second.
All right, please vote on that slate.
Get everybody else to vote verbally? Yeah. Yes.
So we need to vote verbally? Oh, we got it. All right. Motion passes five to zero. We will fill out the appropriate paperwork and submit it. Thank you all very much. All right, we have a I'm sorry, everybody. Business Services Board Policy First Reading. And this is sale or lease of district owned property.
So this is an update to law regarding how we would dispose of sailing or otherwise for surplus property. So if we were to have property that we no longer wanted to retain, there's a process for how to sell that, either to declare that as exempt. There's a list in our administrative regulation of the exemptions. And if not that, then a declaration by the board and a submission to the housing authority. I'm using the wrong government agency name, but that's similar to that. And then they can rule on whether or not we've properly exempted it or not. And then a process to follow that would include community input from specific list of stakeholders on the disposition of that property. So this is just an update, law update to our board policy. It's not something we're taking action on in any way right now.
Okay, any questions? It's not actionable.
I would, I would recommend to the board to approve or.
Okay, so this is a first reading. We have the option of approving it right now. Do we have a motion? Okay, second. Ms. Gardner moves. Mr. Houston seconds. Please vote. All right, motion passes five to zero. Moving on to board member and president reports. Ms. Gardner.
Start.
Yay.
I have a little bit lengthy because the last meeting I attended, I missed the meeting where I would have reported. So I have a few items. I represented the board at the PTA Council, which is always a joy. And you know, they, they always have one of the vendors come and provide food. And this time it was Shakey's, which was, yes, was really good. But it's, it's so well run. It's so perfectly run and they keep to time and they finish all their business. I'm always impressed. I really am. I was happy to attend the, the Escondido Education Foundation Gala, the, an auction. And I hope it was a big success. It was very well attended. And a good time was had by all in the new location. I represented the board at the the Gate Collaborative. Yes, I had, I thought I wrote that down, the Gate Collaborative. And it seems to be attending to the, to the parents' concerns, which is, which is good because parental involvement is very important. And Gate kids have special needs as well. They, they should be identified as special needs kids. Of course, we had the board study session. I had the great pleasure, and this is one of my favorites every year, to read Across America at at Juniper. I read to a lovely two, two, three classroom. And I should have brought my notes with me on the, on the teachers, but they were so beautifully behaved and they so, so appreciated the story that it was a real joy. And then I read at we go to, after that, I went to Orange Glen and read. And another, another two, three classroom. Say, where did I do the TK? Oh, the TK was at Oak Hill on, on that Wednesday. But I read to a, a two, three mild mod classroom and you would not have known. I, I wouldn't have known. They were all so beautifully behaved and very attentive, enjoyed the story. I actually had brought with me three Billy Goat's gruff because I thought, oh, that's something that they probably don't, don't teach anymore. It's probably not, but it actually is. It actually is. Oh, actually that, I think I read that to the TK. Sorry. But it was, it was a lovely time. So I always appreciate being invited. I wish more schools would do it. And when I found out at Juniper, when it went into the library, they actually have a scrapbook of all the past readers. It's like going down memory lane. You would, you'd, and Carolyn, of course, was, was in there. Carolyn Gilbert and, and past board members, members of the community and just brought back really nice memories and nice conversation with the, with the librarian as well before. And she's, librarians, of course, love reading and they share that love with the kids, which is wonderful. And, oh, I also attended the DAC meeting. And I have to say, I got some, some comments. I was very impressed. It was nicely attended, first of all. But there were some TK parents that, that was their first meeting. And we need to encourage them to stay involved and make sure that they understand that their participation is critical to this district. So I hope that they'll be with us for many years. They had some good input. One of the remarks that came across was that the parents would like to see more focus on academic intervention in the ELOP program to help individual students who are struggling in reading and math. And so that was encouraging to me that the parents are asking for that as well. I mean, it's all well and good and, and you like to see kids enjoying themselves and exercising and, and participating in different sports and so forth, but they, they need to be literate. We need to pass on children through our, through our system who are literate when they, when they leave in eighth grade. It's critical for their future success. So just encouraging. They, also there was a suggestion that came forth about having, and this was based on a parent's previous experience, having counselors for an intensive eight week intervention program prior to automatically requiring IEPs for students. In other words, maybe, and they said that Vista Hill has a program called Dino Schools. Laura, I thought, I thought you were there at that meeting. Do you remember that conversation about the, the counseling intervention before? I don't know if it, if it struck a chord with you. Oh. Yeah.
Replicate what they were suggesting.
Good.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And that's my, I think that's my report. Yeah. Done.
I'll take both of your times. I've been trying to visit schools and see their UA time. So I visited Oak Hill and I saw the first grade ELA UA time. And that was fabulous. They have a rock star team there. Some of the, I think two or three of those teachers in the first grade have been together for twenty plus years teaching as a, as a group. And you could tell they had a, a lot of continuity between the classrooms and what they were working on and what was up on the walls. And then I went to Central. I saw the fifth grade for their math UA time. And again, excellent instruction, excellent breakouts with the students and what they were working on. So that was great to see. I attended the Gate Collaborative with you. I thought it was interesting that we have screened one thousand four hundred and sixty five students this year and we had a hundred and one qualified students, which brings us to a total of five hundred and sixty students in the Gate program in our district, which I think is really good. And I think it's important that we keep supporting that program because I know how hard we worked to get that program back here. So. And then we also had a presentation there from our own Tina Page on perfectionism. So I thought that was very interesting and great to hear from someone from our district. And then I attended the Education Foundation Gala with you as well and we had a great time. I beat my record last year, so I had three bottles of wine, one this year instead of two, so I was pretty proud of myself. And then I participated in the reading Across America as well. I saw the second graders at Orange Glen. I did the fifth grade at Juniper, which had a fantastic book the librarian suggested. It was called New in Town. It was a really great book. And then on Wednesday, I did kindergarten at Oak Hill and not playing favorites, but Oak Hill did have snacks set out for all of us. So just putting that out there of not saying it's my favorite, but you know, it was really, really nice to stop at. And then I also represented the board at the Community Schools Committee meeting. I think it's our third one of the year. We have one more before the school year is out or at the very end of it. We talked about the best ways to, what the goals are again, and the best ways to track those goals. And then what, you know, just kind of updates on what's happening at the school site. So it's, it's really encouraging and look forward to the next year of community schools when we, you know, have a whole year behind us and we're up and running. But that is my report. Thank you.
All right, just a couple of things I will, that I'd like to highlight would be, yes, Read Across America Day. I was over at Oak Hill Elementary and had a very good time reading to a class there. An alternate book, view of the Three Little Pigs from the wolf's point of view. And just a wonderful reminder that there's two sides to every story. Fifth grade, fifth grade.
So you didn't confuse the little ones.
I, it was not a TK class. And so that was good. I was able to visit a couple of schools, their special education programs focusing on the experience of our paraeducators in, in the classroom and just how hard they're working to help serve our students. So wonderful experience and thank you to everybody that was willing to talk with me. The Education Foundation fundraiser was again a, a joy. Over seventeen thousand dollars raised, which will go directly into our classrooms. So thank you all very much. Dr. Abara would have won more bottles of wine, except I was, I was rationing the tickets with his winning number on them. And then oh, PTA Council. I went to the last PTA Council meeting, but I go for the frozen yogurt. So, you know, in this case, the vendor was a hot dog vendor. But what was really cool were all the different ways that they have of raising money for the schools and sort of how PTA supports that. In that particular night, there was a Reedy Creek parent or family that has a fundraising business where they, they market coffee that is personalized branded for the school. So I have Reedy Creek Coffee, which I learned more about coffee that night than I care. I didn't mention that I'm seven eleven, so.
I was just saying you're not a coffee snob.
Definitely not. And with that, reports from Cabinet.
So it is National School Social Work Week. And so a big thank you and shout out to our school social workers who do an amazing job each and every day. I also went to Juniper and Oak Hills, Read Across America, and I read that same book, but to a first grade class. Mr. La, so Mr. La Masters and I, I realized, okay, these kids really believed me.
You see?
So I had to do a little more explaining to do with that first grade class.
They trust the adults.
But what was really cool at Oak Hill is the, every classroom door, they have a contest and they decorate their door on books. And so Curious George, there was just a lot of great things to do. So both Juniper and Oak Hill, I was able to do.
Did you see the couch? The couch potato what?
Oh, yes. Yeah. And yes, snacks were available. And yes, PTA Council, it was a hot dog vendor, bacon wrapped hot dogs. So it was good. Okay, that's all I have.
All right, the board study session will be held on Thursday, March twentieth, twenty twenty five at six PM. At seven PM. The next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Thursday, April third, twenty twenty five at seven PM in the Escondido Union School District, Carolyn Gilbert Education Center, twenty three ten Alder Grove Avenue, nine two zero two nine, and we are adjourned.